Okay, good morning again. I am pleased to kick off the fiscal year 2024 budget presentation. This is, of course, our transition year, a big transition year, from the longstanding January one fiscal year to an October one fiscal year. This realignment will create better transparency to residents and businesses in Kent County, streamline staff efforts, really, in effect, from doing two budget and audit processes to one process, and align the county general fund budget with budgets that are mandated to be on October one in major service and cost areas of the county. Many of our health and human services, such as a childcare fund and health department, also, of course, different of our court areas. The fiscal year change created an awkward year of transition where we, of course, had many other things going on. We held a strategic planning process just recently, four, six weeks ago. Also, we have eight new commissioners this year who were getting up to speed on different aspects of the county and the budget. And so we'll be doing strategic planning again in October to kind of get us onto that more natural cycle of making sure we get the full input before budgets are starting to be developed and all that. Also, we are embarking on a Kent County 2050 futuring plan with a host of community organizations that will be a very public process and will also then feed our next iteration of strategic planning as well. You know, we are completing the fifth year of the last five-year plan or more than one year adopted strategic plan. And our plan going forward will be to kind of do what we have been doing, meet every year, update that, and keep it as nimble as possible. Major policy discussion will also happen as we go through the budget process. Even prior to strategic planning, we heard the request to look at tax rates. We will be scheduling a session just on that and providing you a lot of information to get up to speed on our tax rate versus our county value proposition, the services we provide, and where we're at over time, I think. We're also in a peculiar time in our fiscal history as revenue this year finally exceeded on a percentage basis, revenue growth prior to the Great Recession. So we had finally had a year that exceeded the years prior to the Great Recession. So that's quite a while ago. The recession, COVID-19 pandemic, and the resulting great resignation have resulted in extraordinary challenges in recruitment and retention of talent. We need to continue providing excellent services to our stakeholders. In addition to unprecedented workforce issues, we have inflation, supply chain, and possible recession coming. And also, I think, worthy of note, we are seeing increased unfunded mandates regardless of who's in power in Lansing. It's just more and more, I think, that the Headley Amendment to the Constitution is ignored, and counties are expected to pick up more and more services at our tax and fee and ratepayers' cost. We believe that this budget represents a stable approach to continuing excellence in services during these turbulent times. We also know there will be challenges in just maintaining these services at a high level with some of the increased demands that are looming on the horizon. We look forward to upcoming budget discussions with the Board of Commissioners and ultimately approval, again, as we always do, of a balanced budget that will continue to enhance the strong fiscal performance of Kent County. Finance and Physical Resources Committee set the 2024 budget guidelines on February 21st. The CIP project plan was approved by the Finance Committee on April 18th, and the strategic planning session with the board was on May 12th. Again, as I mentioned, those are a little bit discombobulated from where we, the business cycle we plan to get on in the future. The proposed budget summary was distributed on June 16th, and today we will review the proposed general fund budget. We will be summarizing the general fund statements included on pages 26 and 27 of the annual budget summary, highlighting the key changes included in the 2024 proposed general fund budget. We can have questions and discussion as we go. There will also be opportunity for further discussion at the end of this presentation. Please keep in mind the year-over-year comparisons are not apples-to-apples, as the 2023 adopted budget is a nine-month transition budget to accommodate the fiscal year-on-change from December 31 to September 30. Okay, and then Jeff is going to take revenue, and Marvin will take expenditures, and then we will turn it over to more Q and A beyond what you might have during the presentation. Jeff.
Jeff Dode, good morning.
Good morning, thank you. So you can see on this screen, this is the key changes on a overall scale, and we'll be going through those in more detail. So moving from left to right, you can see total revenue sources, 23 adopted budget, 184.2 million, proposed 24, 226.1 million, or a 22.8% increase. And again, we'll say this a few times, but we're going from a nine-month to a 12-month budget, so a lot of these comparisons will not make a lot of sense this year. Next year, we should be on a more regular cycle, year-over-year comparisons. On the expense side, you can see total uses, 164.2 million, budgeted last year, 226.1 million this year, an increase of 37, almost 38%. Again, comparisons, just kind of ignore those this year, so. Results in a structurally balanced budget, once again. Looking at the revenue sources in more detail, taxes category makes up 56.8% of the total, increasing from 119.2, almost 3 million, to 128.3 million, or a 7.6% increase. It's up over $9 million from the prior year. Property tax estimate is based upon a millage rate of 4.1310 mills, which is unchanged from the prior year, which is a little bit different to last several years. We've had Headley rollbacks this year, we did not. An estimated taxable value is 32.1 billion, which is a 4% increase over prior year's final equalized value, and neither of these two variables will be finalized until next spring, which is typical after the rules are established. You can see the Headley, the county's taxable growth is strong, as it's been since the state instituted Proposal A back in 94. However, property tax revenues have lagged actual growth due to the limits Proposal A puts on TV increases. This has been compounded by the millage rates being rolled back due to Headley. And you can see here on this chart, rollback started in 2022, I'm sorry, it started in 2019, down in 2020, '21, and '22, and then it's remained constant over the last year. You can see the county, the total lost mills here, I believe it's on the next screen. 1493 since 2008 for a total revenue loss of 4.5 million, just the general fund. Across all millages, 2.2125 mills have been lost, it equates to 6.4 million in lost revenues for 2024. Because the taxable value has been so strong, the county hasn't been as heavily impacted by the reduction in taxable value due to Headley this year. However, because the reductions are permanent, the county will fill it when the economy changes and taxable value flattens out. Reduced tax revenue growth from flat taxable value will be compounded by a permanently reduced millage rate going forward. And at the next category, intergovernmental revenues, makes up 13.7% of total sources, shows an increase of 11 million or 55% over '23. The largest intergovernmental revenue is from state revenue sharing, which is up 1.65 million or 10.4% from the previous year. On an annualized basis, it's 14.14 to 15.78. Liquor tax revenue is up 1.57 million or 40.6% over the prior year on an annualized basis, from 3.86 million to 5.42 million. Half of all liquor tax revenue is used for substance abuse services. The intergovernmental category makes up 13.3% of the total sources. Sorry, moving on to charges for services, did I mess the slide, Marvin? Moving on to charges for services, there's an increase from 22.1 million to 30 million or 35.4%. Much of this increase, again, is attributed to the change in the county's fiscal year. However, we are starting to see decreases in real estate transfer tax and recording fees due to higher mortgage interest rates and the impacts it's having on the refinancing of mortgages. A lot of people are stuck on their mortgage at a lower rate right now, and it's impacting their ability to move out of their current house. Real estate transfer taxes are down 9.5% and recording fees are down 8.8% as compared to 2022's numbers. Investment, rent, and royalties categories went from 3.3 million to 7 million or 111.2%. It makes 3.1% of the total sources and shows an increase, again, 111.2%. So attributed to the change in the county's fiscal year and the rising interest rate environment, as we all know, the feds have upped their interest rates several times over the last couple of years to try and combat inflation. Other revenue category makes up 3.3% of total sources, shows an increase of 2.63 million or 54.8%. Revenues in this category are due to the county's fiscal year change and 300K in dog license revenues as a result of moving the animal shelter to the general fund from the health fund. Transfers in category makes up almost 10% of the total sources, shows an increase of 7.67 million or 52.5% over the '23 budget. The increase is due in part to the transfer in from the correction and detention millage fund being reduced in '23 due to the shortened fiscal year, and we're expecting a $2 million installment payment from the lodging excess tax fund to begin paying back the $10 million that's owed to the general fund from previous transfers. With that, if there's any questions on revenues or anything else, otherwise I'll turn over to Marvin for expenditures.
Any questions from commissioners? Of course, we'll have another opportunity when we get through all of this, but Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. Just real quick, Jeff, for the new folks in the room, can you quickly go over the, what the lodging excise tax reimbursement piece is?
Oh, sure. So the lodging excise tax has been used to pay the bonds on the CAA facility, the DeVos Convention Arena place. And for two periods, once during the Great Recession and once during COVID, the general fund had to make advances to that fund to make those bond payments. So the total outstanding right now is $10 million, so this will be the first payback of that outstanding $10 million because the lodging excise tax fund has done really well the last couple of years since COVID, so.
I appreciate it, thank you. I just know when I was sitting here the first time, this was all foreign language to me, so thank you.
Anyone else? All right, if not, Marvin?
Good morning. Good morning. So I'll be presenting the general fund expenses by function. That's on page 27 of your book, if you're following along in your book. Before I go there, however, I'm gonna look at the, I'm gonna highlight the personnel, which is on page 26, in the general fund by category. Personnel makes up 117.6 million or 52% of the total general fund budget. There are 18.6 new positions in the 2024 proposed budget, seven of which are in the general fund. Budget wage increases are 4%. The health and RX benefits are estimated to go up 5%, and the pension rate will be Also, the animal shelter was moved to the general fund, as was mentioned previously, and that's gonna move 11 full-time equivalent positions to the general fund and 1.1 million in personnel costs. Let's look at the general fund by function on page 27. The general government functional area makes up 45.7 million dollars or 20.2% of the proposed general fund budget. General government functional areas allocated across equalization, clerk's office, facilities management, fiscal services, human resources, IT, policy administration, and the treasurer's office. The clerk's office in orange makes up 9% or 4.1% of the general fund budget, 4.1 million, excuse me. Personnel costs make up 3.4 million or 81.5% of the clerk's budget and includes the addition of an office administrator position. The proposed budget also includes $200,000 for ballot printing and $300,000 for election management programming for the upcoming presidential election. Services in yellow makes up 9.3% or 4.2 million of the general government budget. Personnel costs make up 3.7 million or 87% of this budget and includes an assistant fleet supervisor position. The proposed budget for the fleet services, Division of Fiscal Services, also includes additional funding for vehicle repairs and maintenance, vehicle supplies to support the expanding fleet pool, and equipment for the new fleet assistant supervisor position. IT in green makes up 18.6% or 8.5 million dollars of the general government budget. Personnel costs make up 5 million or 59% of this budget and includes the addition of a senior application support position and an existing system administrator position being moved from DPW to IT, and will now be shared 50/50 between IT and DPW. The budget also includes funding for software maintenance agreements as the county continues to transition to subscription-based software and disaster plan, oops, disaster plan regulatory compliance. And this is just to ensure that we're in compliance with our insurance regulations and prevent any security issues. Next, we'll look at policy administration in the dark blue, makes up 16.7% or 7.6 million dollars of the general government budget. Budget includes funding for outside legal services to assist with collective bargaining, survey data collection and analysis software used countywide to support projects and initiatives, a sheriff staffing study, and a 1.2 million contingency to support the outcome of the sheriff staffing studies and potential new initiatives. On to public safety. Public safety makes up 83.7 million dollars of the proposed general fund budget or 37%. As mentioned, the animal shelter was moved to the general fund and makes up 2% or 1.7 million dollars of the public safety budget. Sheriff makes up 98% or 82.1 million dollars of the public safety budget. Personnel costs make up 62.5 million or 76.2% of the sheriff's budget and includes the addition of an emergency management training and exercise coordinator position. Healthcare costs are up 3%, inmate food contract is up 8%, and capital outlay is up as it now includes body cameras, tasers, in-car cameras, and jail video cameras that were previously included in the CIP budget in past years. Judicial function makes up 28.6 million or 12.7% of the total budget. Judicial is made up of the courts, prosecutor, and probation. Personnel costs make up 82.5% of this budget and includes two additional circuit court clerk positions. Otherwise, the judicial function maintains existing programs and services. Social services function makes up 8.8 million or 3.9% of the proposed general fund budget. Substance abuse, medical examiner, and mental health budgets are the largest in the social services function area. Other than increases to the substance abuse contribution, which corresponds directly with increases in liquor tax revenue, this budget maintains existing programs and services. Recreation and culture function of the parks budget makes up 7.7 million or 3.4% of the proposed budget. Personnel costs make up 4.7 million or 61% of the parks budget and includes additional temporary staffing to provide services for new and expanded offerings, including maintenance on the new Wallfield Park North Development, expanded hours and extended seasonal operations at Millennium Park, and maintenance of new rental cabins at Wabasus Campground. Community and economic development function makes up 1.3 million or 6 tenths of 1% of the proposed budget. Budgets in this function maintain existing programs and services with the only change being a $50,000 increase in the economic development department or cost center, I should say, for contributions to the Kent Conservation District that was formerly budgeted in the general government function. And of course, this functional area is distributed across registered deeds, cooperative extension, Public works with the drains budget makes up 880,000 dollars and 4 tenths of 1%. And this budget maintains existing programs and services. Lastly, the transfers out category makes up 55.8 million or 24.7% of the proposed Changes include four new school reese officer programs planned for 2024. There's a circuit court grant previously reported in the general fund is now in the special project fund, increasing the transfers out. And there's $8 million for strategic capital included in the CIP fund, 5 million of which is a set aside for a future contribution to establish the liability insurance authority. Proposed budget review is scheduled to continue July 11th. The Finance Committee is scheduled to act on the proposed budget on August 8th. The public hearing is scheduled for August 10th. On August 22nd or before, the Finance Committee will act on annual grant budgets such as childcare, friend of the court, intelligent defense, and health, to name a few. And the full board is scheduled to act on the budget, it's meeting on August 24th.
All right. That covers revenue and expenses at a very high level, so questions from commissioners? Commissioner McClellan.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for this presentation of this high-level information. It's good information to see, but I can't say that it provides any context in terms of how we got here. I was looking at the information that was provided to us from the budget boot camp and telling us how the CIP process was gonna work, how the operating budget process was gonna work, kind of timelining that out. And so I guess I would say that I thought that we might be able to, as a board, have a bit more insight and detail behind this, these operating budget, you know, this proposed budget before it came to this point. And I'm a little, I should say, I'm a little perplexed about why we weren't really involved a little bit more in having some, having more information. This is not necessarily for you, Marvin, but I guess my question would be to Al is like, what, how is this process gonna change to involve commissioners a bit more, let us have more information and more understanding about what's being compiled in here before it gets here? Like, I get it, I read all of the notes, they were very informative, but we didn't, I'm looking at the budget process document that was provided to us at the budget boot camp. So pretty much the requests are, the requests came in in April, there was hearings with departments, decisions were made in May, modify and submit the budget. So the whole process during May, I don't believe that involved much, like us at all. And so when we get this in June and July, and we're supposed to say, okay, we approve or don't approve it, what information really are we using to make that decision? And so I want to be an informed commissioner as I make these decisions about budget and really understand how the information got here, what was happening in the departments, how these things were, you know, derived. And I feel like I'm ill-equipped to be able to make a decision on the budget based on what's before me. Now, again, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not good information. I'm just saying that I don't feel like I'm equipped to be able to have the necessary information to make a good decision. And so moving forward, we are where we are right now, but moving forward into the next year's process, how might we, as a commission, be a bit more involved in this? And I sit on the Finance Committee, and I feel like I should at least feel a little bit more informed, and I don't. It's my first year on the Finance Committee, maybe this is normal, but I feel ill-informed.
I think a couple answers to that question. One would be that, obviously, the process of gathering all the information, putting it into a recommendation, is something that I'm legally tasked to do under Michigan law. And so we view this as kind of the start as far as, you know, how many work sessions we might have or what questions you might have that we need to answer. I mean, this is the start with the first high-level presentation, then the budget doesn't get adopted until September. So I think that, and part of it is, we really need to know what it is you would like to know, and then we will absolutely provide it. Obviously, this works a little different than state law and some other type of processes where you have elected folks kind of in, right from the ground, developing their own proposals, like the House proposal, the Senate proposal, and the governor all do different things. But no, I mean, we absolutely, if we can know what you want to know as a board, then we'll absolutely provide it.
Well, I think that that's part of it, right? Like, we've got eight new commissioners and some of us that are very new on the Finance Committee. So what do we, we don't even know what to ask to say this is what we need. And so I feel like we need, we need guidance and we need direction in terms of this is how it's crafted, this is what information goes into preparing these numbers for you all to make a vote on. And so I can't tell you what I need to see, other than I think I need to see a bit more. I don't know what that is, but I would, I would be seeking guidance from your office to really help inform, you know, us so that we can make informed decisions, because transparency is only as good as the information that we know, right? And if we don't know what to ask for, we don't know if what we're getting is really the information that is going to help inform decisions. I can look at this and say it's not, and I'm an accountant, I read financial statements all the time, but if I don't have the understanding about the information before it gets here, I have a hard time, as a finance person, being able to say I support the things that are in here. And so I'm, I'm just making a plea, right, that we, that we find a way to better inform us before we have to be making these decisions that really we're accountable for. In the end, our votes, our votes are what we're held accountable for, and if we're not make, if I, I'm not gonna speak for everybody, I'm gonna speak for myself. If I'm not feeling informed, I can't vote yes.
All right, so our process is, obviously, departments submit budget requests, and they use their prior year budget as a baseline, they try to figure out what they need for the upcoming year. In 38 years of doing this, I can tell you that there hasn't been one where the amount of revenue that's projected has been enough to cover what departments request. So then we have to go through a process of meeting with departments and talking about what is it they absolutely have to have, what are things that are more nice to have, and then we end up with ultimately a balanced budget to propose to you. I mean, we could show you a document, if it would be helpful, of what the request was and what was specifically pared back in order to balance a budget. Is that the kind of thing that might?
That would actually be helpful to know what was submitted and how you all weeded through it. It's not, I'm not, we're not trying to micromanage the, I'm not trying to micromanage the process, but again, that's more information so we understand how we got to these numbers, not, I trust that you all made really good decisions about how to pair that back, but again, without that information, what are we, how informed can I be? So.
Why don't we provide a document then that shows a department request in one column, and then we can show the amount that was adjusted. Some actually had money put in a little more based on further information that was learned, and then the column of what's recommended. And hopefully, that one thing would be something that could provide a lot of illumination.
And I assume that if any commissioner has more detailed drill-down questions on any of those, that they would have the opportunity to sit down with you and/or with Jeff to explore that further, because at some point here, yes, we will have to make a decision up or down on this. And I assume as well that going forward, if any of the commissioners individually or as groups are pushing back on any of the line items, saying, well, we think it ought to be this. to be this, not that, that that's what has to happen between now and August. Commissioner Wood.
Chair. So, I'll at least echo, you know, while I've been on the Finance Committee now three terms, and I've gone through this process a few times to know at least enough to be dangerous, but maybe not enough to be safe. But one of the things that, you know, I certainly feel like even a slightly more veteran member would absolutely appreciate some of that kind of showing your homework side of it so that we know what request didn't make the cut, just because it helps provide the story, the context for what made the budget. At least in the past, what I've, I've, as I've gone through this, you know, the, at least what helps me go through the rest of the document is that summary of major operating budget changes. And at least in this time, as I looked through it, it was almost, it didn't necessarily provide the total context until you looked at the staffing memo that you also provided around the positions. So, could you provide a little more detail on, obviously, don't read over the memo itself, but could you share us a little bit about some of the staffing changes that are being proposed? And I know Marvin did a little bit, but some of the staffing changes that are being proposed and, you know, at least sharing, confirming that's the largest structural change to last year's budget beyond the schedule. Does that make sense?
Yes. So, it'd actually be very helpful if I had that memo. I think one of the background items I should mention is that we are not operating optimally throughout the county because we still have not recovered in many areas from the Great Recession. You'll recall, last year at LHR, we had a discussion. Amy Rolson was bringing forth a request for two positions in last year's, for this year, in last year's budget process. And if you just started, or if you started two years ago, that appears like an increase. It is an increase, but when you consider HR is operating with seven positions less than they had in 2008, at the time when we have our greatest hiring and retention crisis I've ever seen in 38 years of management, it might look a little different to a commissioner like Carol who's been here a long, long time than it might be. And so, what we're trying to do ultimately is get everybody to the same place of understanding county fiscal condition. So, examples, so when you look at the animal shelter technician, that's another one that is being restored from as far back as 2008. Basically, when you look at, you know, when you look at, there's a fair amount of positions in the sheriff prosecutor, we've probably kept up better there since the Great Recession. I mean, obviously, public safety, keeping people safe, keeping communities safe has been a major priority of the board. But we basically, and we can, I'm just going to get the list of descriptions and kind of, I won't read every one, but so, I would say there's a mix in here of just a few cases where we're still recovering from the Great Recession, but then there's other areas such as the prosecutor's office, conversion of two part-time positions to a full-time clerk three because of the significant increase in video review and in redacting that has to be done when videos are provided to those who make FOIA requests for those. IT senior application support, that's a position that helps IT help departments improve their efficiency by implementing and maintaining digital workflow, files and workflow. So, again, trying to create more efficiencies in our budget, so we're spending less to do the same thing by improving our IT capabilities. Indigent defense, senior legal assistance. So, when you see indigent defense, the state is paying for that. I know that's become more of an issue in Lansing more recently, but I think that as we submit budgets, they review them, and they have held to the promise of the MIDC Act, and they have funded those. Fiscal services, fleet assistant supervisor, again, that's being restored from 2010. We're significantly increasing the size of the facility and the capacity that it has for vehicles, and so, there is some adjustment needed there just to keep up once we move in to that new, that new facility. The fiscal senior service, senior administrative specialist, risk management, that's a position that's being added per the insurance authority. Let's see. The clerk has had different positions, well, we have Rob right here. Would you like to comment on some of the additions in the clerk office? Because there's a few here, and.
So, this, these positions that we're adding are across the street at our court office. We've had a number of legislative changes that have come down, the clean slate legislation dealing with expungement of court records. So, there's a backlog of now, a new backlog of those that have to be handled so that we can get these individuals' records cleaned up for their applicable charges that are no longer supposed to be on their record. So, we are adding, we had a request, we requested five staff, and they granted us two, and then we combined a couple part-time positions to handle the rest to meet the needs of the new jobs that we're having to do. So, we're adding one MPP management, office manager, to kind of oversee that process, and then we're adding a senior doctor clerk who will handle that. So, as Al said earlier, meeting the mandates of Lansing, we're just having to find new ways to do what we have always done and add the additional responsibilities that's coming down from Lansing, so.
Are you done, then, Al?
Oh, yeah, I was to follow up for Al.
Okay. I didn't know if you were done doing the staffing review.
No. But, you know, so, you know, I'm realizing I'm reiterating a lot of what's been said, but just to kind of take, take it to the high level once more. You know, the staffing changes that are being proposed are the major structural change from last year's budget, if it was a 12-year budget. And in addition, those staffing increases fit under kind of three categories. One, the fact that we're still operating on our pre-2008 staffing levels, even though our county has grown 10% since the recession in population. So, we have a larger population seeking services that they deserve, and yet, we're still operating under a budget that was cut due in large part to the Great Recession. The second one just being, our service scope has changed over the course of time, just because that happens, especially in county government. And then lastly, the third bucket just being, the rate of change in certain areas requiring additional services, that's mainly the township law enforcement and SROs, but those are coming largely from other sources, not our general fund. Would that, in terms of those three categories, would that fit most into one of those three buckets?
I think so, and I would just make sure we add regulation and mandates to that. But yes, I think that's true. And I don't want to give the impression that we're seeking to replace every position that was cut after the Great Recession. On the contrary, there are a number that we can do without. And in fact, I mentioned that up until last year, human resources was down seven. Well, we don't need two of those because of technology. So, we are seeking to utilize technology wherever possible to not add full-time positions and benefits to the general fund.
And then, lastly, and this might be more of a Marvin or Jeff question, sorry. And you may have gone through this, but given the information that's been given, I'm already starting to forget some things. The percentage changes, that's based on the nine-month budget to the 12-month budget, it's not a percentage change of apples to apples, correct? Have we ascertained how much our general operating mileage revenue has increased based on the 12-year collection in 2022 to our estimated collection in 2023?
Item, if any, in this budget that is comparable year-over-year is the taxes.
Yeah.
So, the 2023 and 2024 are comparable.
Oh, meaning the 2023 estimated amount is how much we've collected over 12 months, not over nine months?
Yes, because, because the summer billing, they're due before September 30th, they're booked in September 30th, so it is a full year's tax revenue.
That, that schedule of money is always going to trip me up, Marvin.
And that's why when you look at the bottom line in '23, we have that $20 million positive margin because we collected all the taxes, and then that'll carry over and fund the first quarter of the new fiscal year.
Which, you know, I realize there's a whole host of other changes, but if I'm looking at the estimated amount to the proposed amount, we're estimating, you know, a 4.2% change, which makes sense, given everything that's been given, and that's about a $5 million increase, and of that, less than a million is coming into these new staffing changes.
Perfect. General fund, it is less than a million, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
For the new commissioners, I'd like to point out, if you, the transmittal letter has a lot of good information in it, if you can read through that, and then at the front of each fund type, there's a schedule of uses, it gives a little more detail into each budget and what's in that budget. Because this thing is so large, what we focus on in this presentation is just highlighting the changes, because the budgets are static pretty much year-over-year, except for changes to, you know, key revenues, or personnel, or program services. So, we try to highlight the changes when we do this presentation.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. At the risk of piling out a little bit, I wanted to share that we've heard from a couple folks in the minority party, and there's a concern on the majority party side too, from me at least, with the process conversation and being able to make an informed decision. You know, this is my third year on the Finance Committee, and I kind of thought in the first couple of years that it was just me, you know, that I just didn't get it. And I tend to agree with at least 95, if not 100% of what Commissioner McLeod said. It's a challenge for us to go out and make an informed decision and then communicate that back to our constituents who we're here to represent if we don't have the full picture. I think it's compounded this year because we don't even have the simple luxury of saying what was the last year baseline, you know, because we have the calendar year change. So, at least in the past, I could take that. If I had nothing else, I could kind of cling to that last number in the column and say, what's the percentage change? But that, you know, I understand it, but it's made it, it's made it a lot more difficult to even lean on that as kind of a baseline number. So, I think that, you know, we've talked about this a little bit, some in strategic planning, some in conversations I've had with other commissioners, but I think that it would be great to inject some of what we're talking about into this process and for us to just have a better feel. I think as members of the Finance Committee, those folks that serve on LHR would say that the Finance Committee gets to make all the decisions, which, you know, I, because we do the budget, there might be some truth to that, but I feel like I'm also in the dark on a lot of it, and I'd like for us to be able to have a little bit more information on some of that stuff. So, I appreciate, Al, what you said we were going to be able to do and get some of that context for how the process worked. And, yeah, so I just wanted to add to those comments. I did have a specific question to pull way up out of where we are right now. There was a, I believe in the general government budget for the expenditures, the staffing study for the Sheriff's Department, and then a contingency surrounding that, and I just wanted to get a little bit more context on that. It's top of mind for me as we hear about, you know, challenges with corrections and being able to get good talent and get folks to do that work that sometimes isn't fun. And then I want to ensure that we have the resources when we do have staffing challenges at the jail, you know, that we're not sacrificing on the road patrol side and that we're not, you know, losing any kind of aspect of that, the actual community, whether it's community policing in the schools or, you know, traditional road patrols in the townships.
Right. We've had, been underway with a staffing study for about eight months now, and we're still reviewing iterations. I think it's getting much closer to being completed, and that's for the correctional officers. We did budget for one for road patrol for next year. And I think that, obviously, things are changing quite a bit in law enforcement and at the jail, and some of it relates back to some of the things we've talked about with recruitment and retention and some of those things. So, I don't think ultimately the amount we set aside is going to fully fund a staffing study. In fact, I think that ultimately we have to look at some other changes even beyond the budget as far as pulling some of that off, but that's really a conversation we'd like to have in work session when we, when we have the completed study.
Okay. That's helpful. I, Al, you mentioned that public safety's been a priority of past boards. It's certainly a priority of mine on this board, so, you know, in response to your question about, you know, you need to know what we need to know, I'd really love to see as much context as we can around the Sheriff's Department in particular and what's happening with requests from them and how it's getting balanced out and all that sort of thing. So, that would be really helpful moving forward. Thank you.
One of the things that Commissioner Green raised as well is the public safety contingency, I think it was 1.2 million was identified in there. And maybe you can talk a little bit more about how that was identified and how that compares to last year and so on.
Well, I think it was, we identified the entire contingency, and then this amount was basically intended to be kind of that first push to implement the staffing study. I think also, within the Sheriff's budget, you would see that there's probably another $800,000 to a million that could be drawn upon depending on what circumstances happen over the next year. But I think it really was just put in as a measure to cover, to cover the study recommendations.
So, the 1.2 is projected to cover just the study or the study and that $800,000?
It won't cover the study, and the 800 is separate.
Okay. Did you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, if I might, Chair, because that was different than the way I interpreted that piece earlier, because it sounded like there would be the, there was the study, and then there was a contingency piece for potential new projects or investment after the study or as a result of the study. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page.
There's funds available to get a good start on implementation of the study.
Okay. All right. That makes sense.
In this budget.
In this budget.
Then that would be the contingency.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Al. Thanks, Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I, we've had several work sessions on the opioid settlement money and how our task force is working. So, when I look at page 32, I see, you know, in the special revenue funds, I see the $1.9 million, and then I look at page 52, and again, I see the $1.974 million. But, and I look at the special revenue funds, and I'm like, I know when you get money, it goes into one pot, but as I look at the whole thing with the special revenue funds, I'm having a hard time making sense. It looks very fragmented. You'll see, you know, KCCA projects here, there, and everywhere, and I'm having a hard time, you know, given the attention we're paying to the opioid money, that in particular is one that I'd say, what are we, you know, what are we going to get? How are we going to use those settlement monies? And we'd like to have it a little bit better defined. And I also, when it comes to the, how we used to review this, it used to be more of a, you know, we used to go through some of these page by page and line by line and, you know, to understand and not just have a general once over, but, and it would take three or four work sessions to, you know, hour-long work sessions to do it. And so, I would like to see more work sessions where we can go through this page by page and just sort of like, okay, this is the page. Do you understand what's on this page? Are you okay with this? Let's go to the next page. And when it comes to the Sheriff's Department requests, I mean, it's, it's like, if we don't have the study yet, why are we starting to make increases into her staffing, especially when it's, I don't oppose school resource officers, but I really would like a real total view of it, given that they don't come in, you know, they aren't allocated anywhere into the six cities.
Right. So, the budget's a plan, and with the opioid money, we know what the settlement is, so we know how to adjust revenue and expenditures, but the Board of Commissioners still needs to weigh in and approve the settlement. So, this doesn't automatically approve the settlement or anything like that. That needs to still come back to you. With the sheriff, we didn't. With the sheriff, we didn't put that in the sheriff's budget. We put it in contingency, because once again, once the study, then a request would have to come to the board to take some action per that study.
So we're not approving staffing changes at this point?
Nothing specific, because that would have to come back to you. So again, if a budget is a plan, they say it's a point-in-time document. If we know something's going to happen, then we want to plan for it, because otherwise, if we didn't say anything, then we would have commissioners saying, well, you knew about this and you didn't plan for 1.5 million for this or for the opioid settlement or that. So again, it's more of, if we know something, we put it in the plan. But just because it's in the plan doesn't mean you're approving that specific item. I mean, obviously, if you approve a 4% increase, that's part of the budget. But if it's an opioid settlement, spending those dollars, that's a separate action that has to come to you in addition to a budget approval.
So when I look at, you know, page 32 in the opioid settlement funds line, I'm not necessarily, and look at 52, and then I'm not necessarily seeing it being allocated to any use then? Because it's not being allocated within the general fund uses?
But doesn't, Al, doesn't the settlement of that money go into the general fund pot?
Well, we account for it in a special revenue fund.
Now, for it in a special revenue fund, and because it's a, special revenue funds can carry forward and have more than a one-year life, that's where it goes because it has a special revenue source. And if it is going to subsidize a general fund later, it'll come in form of a transfer to the general fund, or maybe some activities will be booked directly into this fund. That plan has not been finalized yet. We know the approximate dollar amount, the plan, I don't believe has been finalized.
So that would come in the form of future budget.
Okay.
So a subsequent decision will be required of this commission with respect to the potential use of that?
The opioid plan would be approved by the board, and then the pieces would be approved as other amendments that go to the budget.
Did you have more follow-up, Chair?
Well, I guess it just sort of speaks to, if we go through this a little bit, you know, more systematically, page by page type of thing, we can get to the, that's just one of my questions, and we can get to it and keep moving on. Because this is like the culmination of our year's work is to adopt this budget. And so I'm agreeing with the commissioners on either side of me and what they're saying, you know, about the process.
So just one point of note that we do review, this is general fund today. We have another work session scheduled, I believe it's July 11th, where we go over all the other funds. And that's where those special revenue funds would be covered. So today was specifically general fund related, so that's why we're not into those pieces of the book, so.
And our spirit is to do what you want us to do. I mean, if you want more meetings, we'll do more meetings. But it's hard for us, with all the detail, to guess what you want. And so I know how the budget ran 20 years ago, I know how we did it in other places. But we need to know what you want in order to give you what you want. And so I think the great suggestions to show the requested and where we ended up, that should shed a lot of light, I think, from a commissioner's perspective, having additional sessions and going through line by line, but yeah, that's all fine. I mean...
Yeah, we can schedule another work session. As we said, we do have one more planned at this point, but we can do another work session. I think this was intended to be one of those opportunities to drill down if you have specific questions about this projected line item or that, as in the proposed budget, that you'd be able to raise those questions at this point. But we can do it again or do more, because I think we'll probably run out of time here because a number of us have to be at Dreamboard. Yes, I'm sorry, before we get to you, Christian Hennessey, did you have more follow-up before I moved to the next? Okay, Commissioner Packler.
Thank you, Mr. Check. Just in the spirit of, Al, your specific request for the types of things that would be useful for us. I agree with the previous sentiments about seeing that sort of, you know, what was proposed and what was adjusted. I also wonder, and this might be something you already have, thinking about alignment between the budget requests and the strategic plan. I think that's a really useful thing for us on the commission to think about, because again, as we're responsible to our stakeholders and to the electors of Kent County, we need to be able to say that we are spending dollars on the things that we value as a county and as a county government.
Great point. And in fact, a further step that we plan to take once, and I completely agree with that, is actually on our action requests, putting the goal and objective that that item, every single item that goes before the board, what that relates to. And so that, I mean, the plan is to get there as well, so we're kind of in process on that.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I have more of a, I have less of a process question now, more of a budgetary question. So we talked a little bit about certain expenditures and staffing levels being pre-recession or not returning to pre-recession levels. And one question I did have was I know that we also do fund a number of organizations to do, to assist us with some of our work. Sometimes it's dedicated from lodging excise tax revenue, like Experience GR, and sometimes it's from our general fund, you know, like the Legal Assistance Center. And I'm wondering, have we done an assessment of how many of those were frozen during the recession? And how many of them have been so-called, you know, remark buck up to market, so to speak, right? That, you know, there may be some contributions we've made to organizations to assist with our mission that we have kept the same over these last 15 years, not increasing them while costs have increased. And sometimes that's because that's the only amount that they need, and sometimes it's just because we haven't taken a look at it. So I'm just wondering, have we done an assessment of those expenditures and how many of them may be, or may be beneficial to do a reassessment, so to speak?
I don't believe we have done that specifically. Yes, so Marvin's comment was a number of those are shorter-term contracts, so some have been updated, but certainly that's a picture we can provide.
Thank you. You know, just thinking, those are organizations that help our mission, and if we're trying to reevaluate our own internal capacities to fulfill that, we should think about our external expenditures as well. Thank you.
Further questions, comments? So I'll pop one in here as well, as he looks me between the eyes. So I know that there'd been a request for an additional law clerk from the courts. That is not in here, I don't think, and maybe you can just comment about that?
Yes, that isn't a position that traditionally has been in the court, so it would be a brand-new position, and a new judge had just been added there. And so I think as we looked at, as the positions were evaluated, that one simply didn't make the list compared to the ones that were recommended.
So you and staff are now recommending that one at this point?
Correct.
All right, others?
Just in addition, I think if you look at the circuit court, there typically has been that type of position to do research and that type of thing, historically not in the probate.
History's important, but...
Right, right. No, but it was given a fair evaluation, and that doesn't mean it might not be next year. We do have some that come back, you know, maybe two or three years before being funded.
Further drill-down questions from folks? So is there, you can talk to me after this about the general sense, I'm getting some sense that certainly some folks would like to have another work session in addition to what we have currently scheduled. And it's not like we have anything else going on this summer, so I'm sure we can find time, but we can schedule another work session. And certainly, as we do that, I would encourage you to focus your issues that you want to drill down on so that we can make best use of that time. We can do the page by page, we have done that, you're right, Commissioner Hennessey, in the past. I think at this point, it might be most effective if you drill down, find your specific areas that we need to have more explanation on, and we'll come prepared to do that.
Right. And we're also available anytime if there's questions, or why don't you do that, or could we do that? So, I mean, outside of a meeting, if somebody has a burning question, ask it by all means.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, you want to be able to say you can approach Al and/or others and Jeff or staff to find out if you have further detail you need to get worked out. But you will also get that worksheet, the request sheet from staff or from the departments that has been requested.
Right.
Right, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Quick, I would love that document as well, even being on LHR, I like to, you know, know at least what finance is going on. And I would appreciate another work session as well. Thank you.
Okay. All right, nothing else? Anything else from our presenters this morning? Okay, we will now move to public comment, opportunity for public comment. And you have up to three minutes if you identify yourself.
How you doing, everybody? I'm DeAndre Jones. Passionate, passionate advocate for economic development. And I got to honestly say, looking at the general funds, economic development, fun, the numbers, I'm very disappointed. I'm very disappointed. I'm very, 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 very disappointed that we have eight figures and a lot of different other things, but economic development, we only have crumbs. Those are crumbs. Those are crumbs. This is the second, this county has one of the worst counties in America, in America for economic development. I'm an African-American person. If I wasn't African-American, I'd be standing up for people because I care about people. I think I've advocated and I spoke for different ethnicities plenty and plenty and plenty and plenty and plenty and plenty of times that I've came here and I've advocated for change. And I'd like for you guys to increase that budget, because it doesn't just affect communities that have farms or rural areas, it affects you guys, too. The things that happens in Grand Rapids, Michigan, it affects those other counties, too, those other regions and those counties. I've drove to these other counties. I've drove to you guys' counties and where you guys legislate. I've talked to people, I've went to different communities. I care about those farms. I have fraternity brothers. I'm in an all-white fraternity. I have fraternity brothers. I'm not in a fraternal police order, but I have white fraternity brothers that are police officers. I have people that I care about. I care about those farmers. There are black farmers, there are Hispanic farmers, there are white farmers. Those people need resources, too. Why is there such, why is there such, why isn't there a lot of funding for economic development? We need those resources, not just the third ward, but our county as a overall. We need those resources, we need better funding. Why is there only a million dollars in the economic development fund? It should be at least eight figures. It should at least be eight figures. Look, I left my phone over there. Actually, I didn't. I got sent to build a $20 billion project from Dubai. I flew to Dubai and I connected with people who sell property and build projects. This is a $20 billion project, $20 billion project. Listen to this. There are ocean waves of a $20 billion project in Dubai. I'm not here to play around games with y'all. I'm very passionate about my community in this county, in this state, in this city, and everywhere else. I'm very passionate about this, and I'm disappointed to look at these numbers. Do something better, because I'm tired of this. I'm tired of people struggling. White people, African-Americans, people of color, I'm tired of people struggling. Do something better. Disappointed.
All right, anyone else? All right, if not, we're on to miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous comment? I see none. All right, thank you all for being here this morning. We are adjourned.